Okay, we're ready.
All right. Good afternoon. I'm calling this meeting to order. My name is Luke Ahmet. I am vice chair. Commissioner Asia Williams is also present and Commissioner Steve Bradshaw is absent. Today is Tuesday, the 10th of October 23rd, and we are at the Bonner County Administration Building on the third floor meeting room. We are here today for discussions/decision regarding file or appeal file VA 0015-23. Before we begin, I'd like to ask whether there is anybody who needs visual, hearing, or other impairment that needs assistance? And now I will ask if there are any conflicts amongst the board?
I have no conflicts.
Commissioner Ahmet has no conflicts. And with that, I would turn it over to Planning Director Gabel.
I'm Jake Gabel, Planning Director for Bonner County. So as Commissioner Ahmet mentioned, we're here for an appeal meeting for VA, for file VA 0015-23. The applicants are requesting a 28-foot shoreline setback where 75 feet is required per Bonner County Revised Code. So just as note, this isn't a hearing per se. The 12-261 establishes how to do an appeal before the board of any administrative files. So that's the procedure we followed. We started this meeting, what was that first date? It was in September, but we continued it to this date. The applicants weren't able to be present at that time. They requested a continuance. The board granted that. That's how we got here today. So there's not a noticing requirement for notice in the paper for appeal meetings. It's just a notice to the board with an agenda. I heard some comments that it wasn't properly noticed, but it's not a hearing per lupa. It's just a meeting for an appeal. The decision letter was sent on July 5th. It was retracted and the new decision was sent on August 31st. I'll go through that with the chronology shortly. The appeal received for this appeal today was September 14th. So as stated, it's a, and I'll get into the details as to the 75-foot requirement versus the 28-foot and the conflict between our interpretation of the code versus the applicants. So here's the chronology as to when the file was received. I will say that staff made an error which was caught where we didn't notice the public. We didn't follow our procedure and administrative variance. So I spoke with legal, was advised to retract our decision to notice the proper agencies to notice the surrounding people per our administrative variance standards. That's in 12-2, administrative variance, 12-238. So we followed all those procedures and issued a new decision as of in December, sorry, August 31st. The appeal was received within the 10 working day timeline. We scheduled the meeting with the board September 18th, and then it was continued to today, October 10th. So the applicant was, sorry, the application was not routed to agencies since the request deviation exceeded the maximum 30% deviation afforded under the Administrative Variance Code. After consulting with Bonner County Legal, as I stated, this was rectified by staff and we sent out the notice. We received a handful of comments from Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, Department of Fish and Game, Department of, and Idaho Department of Lands recommended denial on the administrative variance request. This request wasn't evaluated by staff per the criteria of administrative variance. Our evaluation stemmed entirely on interpretation of our setback code of 12-711 on shoreline setbacks. So, and it was denied off of that interpretation. No public comments were received in favor. The decision later incorporating the agency in public comments was issued August 31st. So inside BRCRC, Bonner County Revised Code 12-711, there's, call it a variance built into that code, that if a property is limited as to the buildability, if you want to call it that, or the building envelope of that property, that the setback can be reduced from 75 feet down to 40 feet. So what the applicants in their application requested was a deviation from the 40 feet. So from the baked-in or built-in variance that's afforded in 12-711, they requested a 30% variance from that to get to a 28-foot request. We on the same page there?
Yes, Director.
So BRCRC 12-711B2 applies when the property's building envelope is constrained to less than 100 feet in depth by a shoreline setback. While the building envelope on the 20-acre property is subject to several shoreline setbacks, the property is not dimensionally constrained to under 100 feet in depth of a building envelope after shoreline setbacks are applied and thus the subject, and thus subject to the 75-foot shoreline setback per Bonner County Revised Code 7-11A2. The request for the reduction of the shoreline setback from 28 feet would result in the project requesting a shoreline setback variance of 62.6%. Bonner County Revised Code 12-238 only allows the, an applicant to request up to a 30% deviation. So if the applicant were to proceed with requesting a shoreline setback variance for this project, staff recommends that the applicant apply for a variance per Bonner County Revised Code 12-231 through Bonner County Revised Code 12-235. Alternatively, the proposed structure can meet the shoreline setbacks required per Bonner County Revised Code 12-711A2, eliminate the need for a variance or an administrative variance request. So as stated, we followed our administrative variance procedure, and that's how we got here today. The initial meeting was held within 10 days and continued to today. Let me, so if we're looking at the, we're looking at the site plan itself, this is the subject property in this box here. There are two, two streams and a lake that are restricting the property, Two Mouth Creek. And what they're requesting is a 28-foot setback from here. Yeah. Any questions for staff? I can show you with a GIS view if that helps you understand the project a little bit better.
I have no questions.
I have no questions.
So staff recommends you, of course, follow our decision on this and just affirm our decision. Then the applicant, I believe, has a presentation.
I have no further questions. Mr. Williams?
No, I said I didn't have any questions.
Just wanting to verify, thank you. Applicant? Would you like to, you can either stand there or if you have slides, you can go to the podium.
I do. I'll go there.
Okay.
I'm Larry Sisson, and this is my uncle Chris Hugo. We are part of an extended family that's been part of Priest Lake for more than a century, starting with our first family home on Eight Mile Island in the year 1900. We love the lake and its history. We care deeply about its future, and we're grateful for the chance to speak with you directly, thanks to your having rescheduled this hearing to a date when both of us plus some additional family members could attend. I have a brief opening statement to present, which outlines the basis of our appeal. It's the document in the binder with synopsis in the title, and I'll follow that with a few visuals that we hope will help convey the specifics of our appeal as clearly and as quickly as possible. So with your permission, I'll begin. So just a little bit of background context. After receiving permits and approvals from the Bonner County Planning Department for the siting and construction of our new primary residence near Two Mouth Creek at Priest Lake, Idaho, on June 15th of this year, we submitted a request for a minor administrative variance for a proposed 900-square-foot ADU, which met all required criteria and was based upon the same development standards that we have followed consistently in the compliant development of this family property. Despite these clear precedents and after long delays, the department issued a denial of this request on August 31st, 2023. We are appealing this denial to you, the Bonner County Board of Commissioners, with this statement and the support of the set of documents that we've also provided. This appeal is based principally upon a documented decision made by the planning department in 2018, which has served as the basis for a series of permits and approvals granted to us by the department since. The decision then was to reduce the stream setback from 75 feet to 40 feet on our property, wherever a structure's building pad would be inordinately constrained. As noted by the planning department's director at the time, in reference to BRCRC 12-711B, quote, "If the shoreline setback leaves you with less than 100 feet of building pad, setback may be reduced," unquote. That was the case with the primary residence that the department permitted in 2021, and it is again the case with the ADU that we wish to build directly across the stream. Both portions of this lakefront property are left with less than 100 feet of building pad, and to both, the same setback reduction applies. This too was stated by the director then. "The building pad can be plural and can be in many locations on the parcel," unquote. Though we discussed this interpretation of record multiple times with planning department representatives in 2022 and 2023, and received repeated verbal and written confirmations of its standing, it was not even mentioned by the department in their administrative variance written decision dated August 31st, 2023, nor in the request for input that had circulated early that month to state agencies and nearby neighbors, nor for that matter in the appeal memo that we first saw last week. Instead, this interpretation appears to have been completely disregarded by the department in these documents, despite their having included and honored it in a series of permits and reports that they themselves issued and approved over the past three years. The failure to address the 2018 interpretation of record seems arbitrary and capricious, completely inconsistent with its stated intent and implementation. So too does the disregard for direct precedence. We ask that the Board of Commissioners reverse this decision and ensure a consistent remedy and resolution with the interpretation of record recognized and applied as intended to the entire parcel with the same shoreline setback for primary and accessory dwelling structures, which share the same site conditions, same land use, and the same owner. Anything less than that damages our property's value and diminishes our rights as property owners. Now to help illustrate the specifics of this request, I'd like to take you through a brief set of site plan diagrams, show the primary residence, the proposed ADU, in relation to the approved 40-foot stream setback throughout. The PDF begins with the interpretation of record that we received from the planning department in 2018, which I quoted just a moment ago. You can see those statements here, along with the assurance that these specifics would be noted as part of our file for sustained, stable, ongoing reference, plus the requirement for a flood development permit, which the department issued for our property in May of 2021, and then formally approved in June of this year on completion of the primary residence. Here's the approved site plan from that permit, which I'll zoom into so that you can see and read it a little better. With stream setbacks of 40 feet on both sides of the creek, the location of the building for the primary residence with the approved setback applied. Also shown are the 25-foot property line setback and the 40-foot lakeshore setback, both of which were observed in this permit and plan, and neither of which are at issue in this appeal. Obviously, applying the 75-foot stream setback here would have left us with far less than 100 feet of building pad space before reaching that property line border setback to the north. And according to both code and the department's 2018 interpretation of record, when the stream shoreline setback leaves you with less than 100 feet of building pad, that setback may be reduced. Next, consistently following these same development standards, is the diagram of the site plan for the placement of the proposed ADU on the second of the two waterfront locations available on this property, this one to the south of the stream. Zoom in on this one too, so that you can see how the ADU plan applies the same 40-foot stream setback as was specified in the 2018 interpretation of record and approved in the permitting, for the permit for the primary residence. That's the existing building shown here in this diagram. This puts the ADU in a position comparable to the structures on either side of it, the primary residence to the north and the neighboring cabin to the south, as well as the vast majority of waterfront cabins along and near Huckleberry Bay and much of Priest Lake for that matter. The administrative variance that we've requested applies to just a small portion of this small structure, an elevated open deck extending 12 feet into the stream setback of the project's northwest corner for a total variance area of less than one, sorry, just 164 feet. The enclosed portion of the ADU itself would sit entirely behind the 40-foot stream setback line, as shown in this compact L-shaped structure there, darker structure, and of course, within the lakeshore and property line setbacks. Any questions before I proceed to my last pair of questions here?
Yep, I couldn't follow.
Or I did. When was the main structure that she referenced built?
It was built between 21, 2021 and 2023. So permit issued and then final inspection history report in June of this year.
Well, the permit was issued in 2021?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. In these final two slides, you'll see the relative effects of the stream setback upon the ADU and its location in comparison to its immediate and other neighbors. First, with the approved 40-foot setback applied, as you saw in the preceding permit and plan, with views unobstructed by either structure next door and proximity to the lakeshore on par with those structures. ADU is not blocking its neighbor's views. It's about the same distance to the lake as both of these other two buildings are, and so it'd have benefits equivalent to and consistent with those that waterfront owner, waterfront owners in this area enjoy. Now, apply the 75-foot stream setback, and those benefits degrade or altogether disappear. The distance to the lakeshore is doubled or more, with the ADU now set behind the adjacent building to its immediate south, that building's backyard basically, next to a bulky workshop garage, which results not only in the ADU's views to the south and southwest being significantly obstructed, but also its privacy being impaired, with direct sightlines into the ADU's main living area from the adjacent building's north face and exterior deck. None of these problems appear when the approved 40-foot setback is applied. But when it is ignored, it has the effect of relegating our ADU and this whole waterfront portion of our property to second-class status. Not a waterfront residence commensurate with its neighbors at all, but instead deprived of crucial benefits that those properties enjoy. Nor is it difficult to imagine the potential effects of all this upon the overall property value. So sum up, unequal treatment, disregarding precedents and established approvals, compounded by a series of inconsistencies, misdirections, and delays from the department that have caused us not only the entire, the 2023 construction season, but also considerable money and effort, and have put the entire project at risk. Collectively, these inconsistencies and this variance denial diminish our rights as property owners and threaten to significantly reduce the value of our property. This is why we're here before you today, why we are asking for the denial to be overturned and for our minor variance to be granted. Thank you.
So am I right in saying that part of the problem with this is you're seeing a difference between what a director told you in 2018 and the current director?
Yes, exactly.
So why did you seek input in 2018, but you didn't do, follow through with the build at that time? Was there a permit issued or, because you said it was issued in 2021?
Right. We hadn't secured a builder yet. We hadn't finalized our architectural drawings yet, so we had to spend some time working on those before we submitted. We wanted to make sure we had our materials together before we submitted anything to you. And it's something clearly that we relied on and then we saw followed through on consistently from the department as we worked our way through this. We saw no reason to expect it would change.
That was the only question I had for you was is, because that's what it looks like it comes down to is a change, which I do understand that. I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something there. Thank you.
I have no questions for the applicant. Is there anybody else who would like to present from the applicants?
My name is Chris Hugo, and I'm, was actually the one that prepared the application. And I have a 45-year history, professional history in planning. And the thing I'd say is that the manner of an interpretation that was made in 2018, that really has the status of law, and it's a change to code. Somebody is saying, here's something that apparently people don't understand, how this provision for an exception applies. So it needs some assistance. Somebody come in and say, this is how it applies on a property here. So you make an interpretation. That interpretation now is cast as law for the property until somebody else comes along, could be a subsequent director or something that you do legislatively, and says, well, there's changed conditions, there's changed federal or state law that redirects us to a different outcome, there's something that's changed that causes us to find, have new findings and come to new conclusions about this interpretation. That was never done. There was an opportunity to do that by any director or you, anybody that came along subsequently, but all this time, only one rule has applied. That was the 2018 rule that the planning director of the department established. And unless there was something to change, change of ownership like subdivision or something or something catastrophic or a change of federal or state law that dragged the localities to make a change, there's nothing that wants not respecting that 2018 rule. And if it's done just because, well, somebody had a change of ideas or opinion, well, that's, that's really problematic. And that's what's happened here.
Are you calling the email that he references from Milton a rule or law? Is that what you're calling a rule or law?
Well, it is because it applies specifically in the record. It exists in the record, and it says that it applies to this parcel. And for building pads, multiple building pads, as long as that condition exists, wherever that creek runs through the property is 40 feet. Every map that was submitted by me over a year and a half showed that 40 feet. When I sent it to the staff or called them up, I had 35 contacts by email or phone with your staff to confirm that the 40-foot was there. And I, whenever I talked to a new staff and I said something like, well, where'd you get the 40-foot from? I said, it's in the record. It's part of the 2018 interpretation. And if there's a new interpretation, we haven't seen it. The public hasn't seen it. You haven't seen it, I believe, because there's no record of it. It's not mentioned in this appeal memo you got. So unless there's something that was formally done to trigger reinterpretation, the 2018 one, that's been an applicant, or been applied since they got their first building permit all the way until after I submitted for the variance on behalf of the family, and a couple weeks later, they got their final. Knowing that there's a 40-foot problem, you know, you're 35 feet into the setback, so it was all approved as, as built. That's after we got invested with the ADU application a couple of weeks earlier.
So the other-
What happened between those two dates? We apply for 40, based on 40 feet. The primary residence is approved a couple of weeks later based on 40 feet, and the vesting occurred on June 15th through the interpretation of record.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that the primary residence is in line with the current interpretation, or are you saying it's not?
Let them finish up. It's built to 40 feet.
I, we're at a pause because I needed, needed an answer to that before I could ask you a question, so.
I would like to wait until the applicant is done presenting before there, before questions are directed to staff. I think that's the appropriate way so that we are consistent with our procedures.
If I have a question after Jacob gives the answer, then I'll ask you the question. Okay, sir? I didn't want to have you get up and down, so after he answers my question, then I'll ask you. Sorry.
I have no questions. I have some questions for staff once the applicant's presentation is concluded.
We are complete.
Thank you, sir.
You're gonna ask questions of staff or you'll open for public comment first?
Listen. Is there public comment in an appeal?
We typically hold public comments even at appeal meetings.
Okay. Let's do, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Williams, would you like to have your questions answered before we go into public?
I am gonna just fall in line with what you guys do. If I have a question after I hear the answer, then I'll go have to ask the applicant, so.
So traditionally, it would be staff, applicant, open for public comment, and then we will return for questions to staff. And then if there is a rebuttal from the applicant, followed by questions finally from the board where we're in deliberation, that may be for staff, correct?
Correct.
I would like us to be consistent with our procedures, so I will now open this hearing to public comment. Is there anybody who would like to testify in support of this project?
I have Henry's.
Oh, I, okay. Go ahead, Ms. Cron. Oh. I, I'm, I think we'll make sure that we get Reg's comments.
Yeah, she's, I'm doing it now, so.
Reg, are you in support of this project?
No, I'm opposed to it.
Okay. I'll get, yep. Give me a second, and we'll get to you, and we'll listen to your comments.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Is there anybody who is neutral in reference to the information presented here today? Either online or? All right, Ms., we are now going to enter into the phase of those that are opposed to this file, Ms., even though in this case, I guess they would be in support of the affirmation. So Ms. Crawford, I may have discombobulated that, but now is your chance.
Okay, thank you. I totally, I understand. Reg Crawford, Sandpoint, Idaho. I would like to say I'm opposed to this application. The file itself clearly shows the variance requested is well over 30%. It's a rare occasion when IDL, IDFG, and IDEQ all take the time to oppose a file, and that's significant. That's all I really need to say about that. As far as the past director in what he informed the applicant, it's unfortunate for these people, but ultimately, it was the responsibility of the developer to be familiar with the code and not to rely on an individual. Furthermore, according to code, this application eligible for this appeal because it missed the 10-day deadline. That being said, I would also like to comment on just how bonkers this procedure the planning department and the BOCC has apparently pulled from thin air to address this application. Earlier, Mr. Gabel referenced 12-621 Administrative Appeals. To state that this appeal today is a meeting and not a, quote, "hearing" is nonsensical. This file would absolutely fall under land use and fall under lupa hearing.
Ms. Crawford, this is, this is Commissioner Ahmet, and I know, but thank you, but here's, here's the way it's gonna be, is that we are not here to conduct comments in regards to this procedure. That can be said to me. Ms. Crawford, hold on. Please, and thank you. I would just request that your comments be directed in rough- I would just request that your comments be directed in reference primarily to the file that is at hand, so.
Okay, first, okay, I'll skip the, the, the meeting things, I will say that I believe that Commissioner Amit should recuse himself based on the earlier hearing where he stated, quote, there are other means available to to this applicant to be able to utilize their property rights and to be able to build what they are doing. Mr. Commissioner Amit referenced that he was willing to make a decision that day without having heard any of the, the applicant's information or the department staff's information. And that's inappropriate to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Reg.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Crawford. All right, so now, questions for staff. And at this time, I am going to close the public hearing. We have completed that. Commissioner Williams, you had a question, I have a couple as well.
I'm going to let him present.
So to answer the question on interpretation of multiple building envelopes, so if you were to take Director Allerton's interpretation, it's that this right here is a building envelope between the property lines and this stream. And what the applicant is attempting in their, in their application is to say, this portion is its own building envelope. So if you were to take that interpretation, I would say that, which I don't agree with, I believe there is a building envelope on the property, which you say, you reduce all setbacks, what's the buildability of that lot, right? So let's take Milton's example and say, this, this has its own building envelope. And I would say this also has its own building envelope between these two streams, and then this piece of the property has its own building envelope. So there's a different way to interpret that code as Milton referenced in 2018 to the applicants. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. But Director Allerton is no longer with us, so. And the board, the board from 2018 to the board of 2023 are two very different boards. You answered my questions, thank you. Commissioner Williams.
I don't think I have a question for staff on this one. I think there's a bigger problem here than, because I think in some ways, you guys are actually both right. I don't know, there's no legal here on this one, so my, I think I'll just, I'll ask a question of the applicants and skip staff, I guess. Yeah.
Okay. So I'll turn it back over to the applicant, so you can rebut the comments that you heard from either staff or from Ms. Crawford online.
Actually, I forget your name, sir.
I'm Chris Hugo.
You're the one who presented on their behalf, you wrote it. Can I ask you a few questions on what happened? But yeah, thank you. So on your, on the actual living structure, are you saying that they applied the setback at the rate that you're asking for now when that building was made? Is that what you're arguing?
Yes, and it was shown in all the maps submitted at that time and subsequently for other reviews, including, and the 40 foot was shown on the south side of the stream as well, and all those maps from 2018 on, everything in the record, including the notice maps that the staff sent out to the public for comment, the 40 feet is shown.
Yeah, because that's what I'm trying to understand, because I don't, I don't know that I think this case is actually necessarily arguing what is the rule now? You guys are saying that in 2018, you started a project using a understanding of the setbacks, and as you move to your second phase of this project, then something has changed that has altered the setback. I don't really hear that there's a disagreement, but your original, I was looking at your site plan and your original site plan, it looked like you were using what you're trying to do now, it's just that you're down the road. That's, that's what you're really trying to do.
Yes, and all of my contacts with the staff have made that clear, we're always looking at 40 feet, and we even have a record on March 1st of this year from the staff saying that the planner reviewing it, I was in contact with at the time, looking at a map says, and I think that this is supportable.
You know.
The 40 foot, and I said, well, look at the record because it declares that it's 40 feet. And it's been on all of our submittals ever since, including up until June 15th. When we made the actual formal application.
And it shows 40 feet on either side.
On either side. It's always showed that, we've never seen anything that said 75.
And that's what I pulled up was your.
Including the notice to the public doesn't show 75, it shows 40, even though it states 75, but the map still shows 40.
But when was the site plan submitted?
Which one?
When was this site plan approved, the date?
2021 with the flood development permit.
And then approved again.
Yeah, that's when the permit was issued, and then it was formally approved in June of this year with, along with the final inspection history report. As, as shown here, as it stands.
I will be asking you a question about that, Director.
And my concern coming from the profession is, is like I say, there is the ability to redefine things, you know, you can change the zoning code anytime. And but this to me, it almost seems like, well, somebody bought a property and it had a, in a zone, and the zone has a bunch of listed uses, and they made reliance on that, and then they came along at some point, they applied for one of those uses, they applied for a change of use. And the staff says, oh, that one was taken out. I said, when did that happen? I said, well, we just had a change of opinion, and what prompted that? We just had a change of opinion, so you can't do that anymore. Where was the notice for that? Oh, we didn't do any. Where's the facts and findings for that? We didn't do any. Where's the legislative review of that? We didn't do any. This is what it feels like to me.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that for me.
Can I add one quick thing to that? Because it's so. As the primary owner, principal owner of this property, I was never contacted about any change to the interpretation of record, not once. In fact, what we did was we tried to elicit information from the department by asking, this is the 40 foot interpretation of record for the entire parcel, wherever these conditions are met, according to the code itself, and looking for, you know, giving every opportunity to have that brought to our attention that something had changed. That did not happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, do you have any final remarks in the rebuttal?
Well, just, just one, because I've done those dozens and dozens of times in my life. And I wouldn't have done this if I thought that there was something fishy about it, that there was something that was unwarranted. I wouldn't have done it if there was something that I thought was detrimental to the public interest. For 45 years, I was a public servant, and I, my, my work was always guided by what's in the public interest when I'm making decisions. There's one other thing that has always guided the profession, I think, and that's be fair and be very respectful of private property rights, and that tension between the public interest and the rights to the property owner, you know, try and find a balance that gets to that point, you know, fairness and equity, consistency under the law. And that paragraph, that section for exceptions, that's the mechanism to for a director to find fairness in the law. You've got a property with 280 feet of frontage on the lake, 240 feet of it are constrained with that 75 foot rule, and only 40 feet are left for that whole frontage. And then, yeah, there are other places to build way back in the woods, and we went and looked at that yesterday afternoon, we went on a hike, and there's a lot of environmental sensitivity back in those woods that doesn't exist when you're this close to the lake. When you're this close to the lake, that water body that separates the two pieces of the parcel area, it's a slew, it's lake water, it's 99% lake water, it's not even a creek until you go several hundred feet upstream. Well, that's where the staff wants us to go. Well, you've got more land, go up there and build. Well, that's where the sensitive lands are, so why would you do that instead of just have another cabin on the lakeshore? So this has kind of bothered me from just that balance of public interest versus private property. But the analysis I did for the administrative variance, those criteria, that identifies all the factors why this is a good deal for the public, not just the property owner.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the applicant before we close this section and we move towards final deliberation? All right, at this time, in this appeal, we will close the applicant's presentation. Director Gabel, could you address the comments in regards to the site plan approval, please?
So this site plan was specific to the proposed structure of the main, the main home, right, back in 2018. That home was applied for, the director at the time approved that B L P and followed that interpretation for that structure. What's being applied for now is another structure on a different location of the property. So I don't think that the, well, the previous approval was specific to that B L P, so is that what your question was? That the approval of the flood plain and Title 14, I don't think affects the Title 12 interpretation of this code section. So that, that was a condition of the building location permit to follow our flood plain code of Title 14, and.
It was specific to the structure that is now being constructed, because now we are referencing, is it my understanding, we're referencing, we're trying to use a previous site plan for a new structure?
And when they, when they applied for the administrative variance, we did review this as staff, and we called the applicant, said this doesn't qualify for an administrative variance, and they disagreed with us and wanted us to make the decision on it. We recommended they apply for a full variance, they didn't want to do that, they wanted to follow the administrative process, and that's how we ended up here today.
Okay. Thank you, Director. Commissioner Williams, do you have any questions for staff before we move into final deliberation?
No.
All right, thank you, Director. All right.
This has two elements to it, because on the face of this, the decision that staff made is the correct decision based on the ordinance. My problem is, is that this project was applied for and started using interpretation, and we're just continuing the project and we're changing the interpretation, even though that change is actually accurate, and it isn't recommended that we move forward with the way the setback is. So my dilemma is, we already started the project, and I don't, when I hear the comment about the original building, the living structure was using that setback that you're asking for now, but part of what I can't get away from is that how we were going to apply the setbacks is really what you were relying on for the design of the property. And with the change over the, after you finished your original, your living structure comes a different interpretation, because I find it very hard to, I honestly don't agree with Milton's assessment of its multiple buildings, because once you put a building, you're impacting what you're able to do. My struggle is what is the legal ramification of, we start a project and everybody in Idaho knows it doesn't get finished that year, and then in the middle of a project, we're changing an interpretation on that particular one. And that is hard for me to say what you're supposed to do, because there is a negative impact identified by all of the, you know, the, from Idaho Fish and Game to Lakes Commission, it isn't recommended to do it. But we did it already, and that's what you guys are holding on to, is that we did do it and we approved it, because we don't give you a timeline of when you have to finish a project. And I don't, without asking legal that question, because I'm not allowed to ask ahead of time, my concern is on both ends. If you deny moving forward with what we already did, what is the implication for the county for doing that when we started a project and there's stuff and writing about an interpretation, even though one could argue you should have been faster on the build, and you're saying, well, we didn't know it was an extenuating circumstance, it wasn't, it was seen as something normal, so there wasn't, there wasn't something that made you feel like you needed to rush something. But I also see on the side of the community and of the planners, because their application and decision is in line with what's here, it's just yours is not the way that it's been interpreted. I believe their interpretation is correct. But I don't know if that's the right thing to apply to your project, since you already started it under a different understanding, that's what my concern is. Because, and I think that's where you're relying on the response from the director of, well, is that fair to us? Because we asked, we were in communication, we listened, and we followed everything, and through no fault of your part, there is a different interpretation that is, I believe, accurate. I believe planning is accurate. My question is going to be really to legal of, what is the right and reasonable thing for Bonner County to do, given this? Because I, I will tell you, I read through it all, and I looked at what the planners wrote, I looked at all of the comments, and all of it is right. But I also think that you guys are right as well in some ways, because you applied for it. And without legal in the building, to kind of give me that idea, because I don't want to say, make a decision based on what the rules are and not have any give and take to it if we are just potentially costing you guys litigation unnecessarily. I also want to be fair in that regard. And there, when I look at the Idaho Fish and Game, they completely agree. It's, it's a 40 foot setback from Priest Lake, 75 from Two Mouth Creek, they, but they also gave a solution if we were to agree with the variance and with a concern of agreeing with this variance. And their recommendation was creating a shoreline riparian buffer using natural native vegetation to help ameliorate any negative effects to the water quality and loss of wildlife habitat from this project. And that is my question that I have to ask legal is, is that more reasonable of a decision when in some ways I see that you both are kind of right to make it equitable? I don't know that answer, because that is, that is a difficult one, because we can't continue to grow in this way, we're not supposed to, we're supposed to protect that. And all of the documentation that planning did, it is correct. I do think that Milton's interpretation was wrong, I think that they're right. It's just, I think you're caught in the middle of it, so hopefully you don't have any hard feelings towards planning and making their administrative decision. But that's where I see this particular file, so.
Speaking for myself, I agree largely with you, Commissioner. However, we are here today in reference to the administrative appeal. And staff in their report, along with the comments from the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, Idaho Department of Fish and Game, and the Idaho Department of Lands, recommended denial of the administrative variance request. And so I agree with the decision of the staff. There was also a path forward for the applicant to apply for a regular variance with that riparian buffer that could meet those criteria. But today, we are here in reference to the administrative appeal. And speaking for myself, I believe that the information presented before us makes clear that an administrative approval of this file is inappropriate. The applicant has a method forward, but it is not through the administrative appeal. If you would like to continue or to continue this file to get legal, I am okay with it, but I will, for myself, I am prepared to affirm the staff's decision. I am also prepared to listen to the applicant submitting a similar proposal, but not through the administrative mechanism.
I, I am still looking for what's the way that we make it as equitable as we can, because I couldn't feel stronger that the staff was correcting everything that they did on this file. This staff, I don't agree with Milton's interpretation. I don't know the right path forward on it, I wouldn't, I, because I think there's an extenuating circumstance in this particular file, I don't think it's a straightforward file of, you know, you just applied for it today and they are the only ones handling it, and they told you no, I would say no, because they're right. It's, this is going back a little bit ways, and without legal in the room to say, what is the, what is the downside of saying, continue the file and ask legal to come to help? is the, what is the downside of saying, continue the file and ask legal to come to help identify what we could do? I think that that, my, my goal is not to just say no if I think there's a bigger problem, and I think this one has a bigger problem, and I think that, but it isn't the staff's fault, this staff's fault. I think that this is an unfortunate event. And so for me, I would vote to continue this, to get, allow me to speak to legal on the best path moving forward, because I don't want to, we don't have to have a negative interaction on this one, this one is actually, you guys are in some ways really both right for me. And I would like legal's input on it. And since I can't get it in advance and they're not here, I think that that's the most reasonable path forward, without making a decision, understanding Commissioner Ahmet's position, but if I don't make a decision, then it allows for more of the openness of what we're doing versus saying, go back to start. That's kind of my thought, is to, to delay to a time certain, and then asking legal to give input on this one. I will actually open that, since I made that after during our deliberation, if staff has any problem with that, or if you think that's reasonable, because I don't want to get into the habit of making variances, because we're supposed to protect that. But I also don't want people to feel like, if you ask staff today, we're going to change it tomorrow, which disrupts a plan, because people in Bonner County build forever on projects, and they rely on that, and, but Director Gabel is right, he's, his interpretation is right, so. Any problem with just delaying to a date certain for legal?
How do we?
We have a hearing tomorrow afternoon at 1:00. Send the bill and ask him to review it. I don't know how, how long these guys are in town for.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't you guys really want to be heard at your hearing? Is that to be able to give information? If that question is put forth to legal, do you feel your question will have been answered if you're not available to come back, or are you guys leaving?
It depends what the question to legal is, because I've heard repeatedly that a 28 decision was wrong, you believe it's wrong. And my question is then to you and to your legal advisor, where's, where is that statement that somebody has found it to be wrong? And what are the findings that you find that makes it wrong?
I think that's a good question, and, and that's what this staff has actually done. They've actually gone through that ordinance and Idaho Fish and Game, and you also, you have multiple people that look at the interpretation of that.
Fish and Game wasn't ever given the question, you agree with VCRC 12711B2? You agree with that exception clause or not? You have that in there for a reason. It's this reason. So we say like, well, let's say that the ADU site, and by the way, it isn't ADU, connected to the main house of services, you know, utility wise, so that we're not building it for a drain field and putting another well in back on the property, other environmental condition that we're helping to mitigate by making it an ADU, we downscaled it by 300 square feet by a quarter.
But my question is, if I ask legal the question of what to do, because-
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, so let's just pretend that we cut that pit parcel off to an acre and a half site. This, that 711 applies.
But that has not been done.
The court, the law would say, it doesn't matter if you have just a property line of division, it's the impact on the environment that matters, and that line doesn't have any impact on the environment, it's the same project, the same location, the same conditions.
So are you wanting a decision today, then?
Well, I'm just saying, if you get your legal-
Because a decision today is going to be that I will not move forward with your project, because I am saying that in order to consider it, I need to have a conversation with legal about what your uniqueness is of this file. If you want, what I'm offering is the question of asking legal in this particular case, and I don't agree with you on Idaho Fish and Game, they actually gave a very detailed response, as did staff regarding the interpretation of the current setback and the rules in the application. And even your comments pointed out that when you look, you guys started with the 40 and then reduced it down from that, which increased the percentage. And so my question isn't about the setback and the rule at all. My question is about whether or not we should be looking at this as an odd lot issue related to your request, because I'm telling you, I believe the staff is correct in their interpretation and understanding of the rule. I don't agree with Olerton, but I also see that you guys started this project with an understanding based on information that was presented. I do see that there was a solution given, and the only reason I'm saying not to make a decision is not, I agree also with Commissioner Ahmet, because the question is the appeal of it, but I don't know the right path to make it easiest to find a solution if there is one available to you.
We haven't seen a solution that affects the same.
There is, pardon me, I'm going to go back to the deliberations.
It does some problems.
So, so for us, here's what I'm going to do, and you can deny or not. I move to affirm the staff's administrative decision to deny this project filed VA 0015-23, requesting for a 28-foot shoreline setback where 75 feet is required, finding that it is not in accord with the Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law, and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time, the administrative decision letter was prepared and testimony received at this meeting. I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as set forth in the administrative decision letter, and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in a taking of private property. The action that could be taken to obtain the variance is to, one, file a new application with the planning department and meet the standards required by Bonner County Revised Code, or, two, pursue such remedies as may be applicable at Title 67, Chapter 65, Idaho Code. And the conclusions of law, based upon the findings of fact, if the motion was to be passed, was the proposed administrative variance is not in accord with the purposes of Title 12. The proposal was reviewed for compliance with the criteria and standard set forth at Sections 12-2.3 Variances, Bonner County Revised Code, Storm Water Management Criteria and Standards set forth in Chapter 7, Title 12, Bonner County Revised Code, and Variance Criteria and Standards set forth in Section 67-6516 Idaho Code. Read, "The percentage of shoreline setback variance requested through this proposal is 62.6%, calculated from the required 75-foot shoreline setback to the requested 28-foot shoreline setback. The Bonner County Revised Code, Section 12-238A, does not authorize the planning director to grant a 62.6% shoreline variance through the administrative variance application process." There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Hearing no second, the motion dies.
So I move to schedule this file for a date certain to allow Commissioner Williams to speak with legal regarding this file, although I agree with the idea that's on the table for what our staff did. I think this is an extenuating circumstance, and I'd like my question to be answered to make sure I move in the right direction. This is your downside, if he doesn't second it, we're just stuck.
Well, I will second, but I will amend the motion so that all communication with legal be transmitted to the entire board to save time. Is there a second to the amendment?
I second the motion.
So there's a second, there is an amendment?
We have to pick a date certain.
A date certain, right?
Yes.
So continue to-
Tomorrow at-
Bill is available tomorrow afternoon.
So tomorrow after, that is August, excuse me, October.
October.
You have to agendize that, Bill.
Why would we have to agendize if we're, it's a continuance.
It's like if we, if we, it's a continuance.
It's a continuance.
So you can double check with Bill, but it's not a new meeting? So if, if the applicants are here and you guys are here, and we're just continuing this meeting until tomorrow at-
Because we did that on a different file, where we continued it the next day.
Right, okay.
So I think we're good.
And what if we can't be?
That's, you could zoom in or attend by phone.
We'll be on the road.
You can do it electronically.
Are we allowed to say anything else?
Not at this time.
Not at this time, but tomorrow when we continue.
So we have an amendment with the motion and a second, so first we're voting on the amendment. Roll call vote?
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ahmet?
Yes. The motion has been amended, we are now voting on the main motion, which is to continue this hearing to a time and date certain of October 11th at 1:30 PM in the same location.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
No.
Roll call vote?
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Ahmet?
Yes. It is 3:59, and this meeting is continued to a time and date certain, and is recessed for today.
Thank you.